Amy, you want to lead us on the pledge, should I?
Sure.
I don't think you've done it before.
Yeah, five thirty.
I pledge allegiance to the flag and to the republic of America. Our Constitution, our individual liberty and justice.
Thank you. Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Here.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
He's on. Ronzo. Uh, approval of the agenda. Commissioners, any additions or corrections? Someone entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion Commissioner Wiltse? Support from Commissioner Mayhew, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item three, declaration of conflicts of interest. Are there any commissioners? Okay, item for review of minutes, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
I reviewed the minutes, I will make a motion that we approve.
We have a motion, Commissioner Wiltse? Any support? Any support to approve the minutes from November ninth, twenty twenty-three? Support from Commissioners, further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries, uh, November ninth, twenty twenty-three, closed session meeting minutes. Go in front of us.
I'll make a motion to approve the closed session minutes.
Motion for Commissioner Wiltse, support from Commissioner Mayhew, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item four C, November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole meeting minutes. Someone like to entertain a motion to approve this?
Make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion for Commissioner Wiltse, support from Commissioner Simmons, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, closed session minutes. I'll make a motion, those are in front of us as well.
I'll make a support.
Uh, Commissioner David made a motion with support from Commissioner Simmons, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries, item five, public comment and agenda item matters. This is on agenda items only, is there any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Item six correspondence, were received correspondence from Delta County related to opposition to preemption of local control in Santa Clara County, opposition to statewide septic inspection code, those have been received and filed. Item seven, consent agenda. Is there any of these, it's you guys are, I think there's some here that we can definitely combine. I think we hit them pretty good at committee of the whole. Is there any of these you guys would like to pull separately and discuss?
Yes.
Which ones?
D as in dog.
D?
I just, I just want to discuss it.
Okay. And then item B as well, how do you guys feel about combining item seven A, seven C, and seven E?
What do you mean combining them as one resolution?
Yes. Or would you like them individually?
Individually.
Individually.
Okay, items. Seven A. Uh. Resolution to approve per diem rate for special transit committee. This resolution is sponsored by Special Trans- Transportation Committee on March second, twenty twenty-third, the Ogma County Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-three dash three-five to establish, to establish a special transit committee to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners and to report manners considered and rejected, as well as those considered and recommended. The Special Transit Committee requested a per diem rate for its members that is consistent with the rates established by the Board of Commissioners, August tenth, twenty twenty-three. Approval of the resolution will establish transit committee per diem rates of forty dollars for attendance at each officially called meeting, which which lasts less than, whoa, which lasts less than a full day and seventy-five dollars per meetings lasting a full day, full day, per diems would be paid by the transit fund.
I'll make a motion that makes up this resolution.
Motion of Commissioner Wiltse?
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons? Any further discussion? And this is as of this month going forward, correct? Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item seven B, resolution to submit to the lec- electorate, a special millage question for renewal for restoration of funding for Ogma County's Office Road Patrol. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert, in twenty twenty, the residents of Ogma County voted to approve a millage at the rate of one mil for road patrol services, that millage as ruled down expires in twenty twenty-three, the sheriff seeks to return to the full rate for up to one mil of taxable va- valuation for four years, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven inclusive. The lobby would raise an estimated one million thirty-three thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars in the first year. Approval of the resolution will place renewal and restoration of the sheriff's office road patrol before voters and an election scheduled for February twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this resolution.
Motion from Commissioner Wiltse?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons? Discussion? Go ahead.
My thoughts, if we're spending ten thousand dollars on this election, maybe it doesn't pass this time, and I just say we don't put it back on again.
I think.
To compete with, compete with all the other millages, I mean, it's going on all by itself, it doesn't make it, it's done. That, that's, that's my thoughts about this. I don't mind putting it on for this February election, I don't mind at all. I think it's perfectly fine, but to keep submitting it, submitting it, submitting it, submitting it, so they can, if it doesn't pass it. You know, people are gonna get upset, we've already failed, didn't pass it, so I'm hoping it passes uh, for the, our road patrol, but I hate, keep putting stuff on the ballot all the time, that that's just my personal opinion, that's all I have to say about that.
Any other discussion?
Um, we, we did receive some good news, the core ISD just brought to our attention today, that they will also be going in February, so we'll be able to split costs with them.
Good.
That was just today, right, you guys got that email?
We did, great.
So that's a, that's a plus.
Um, we are, just for, um, full disclosure, we, uh, clerk and I have been working with the attorneys all day to make sure we understand that, uh, cost of that will be proportionate to, to both, so the, the county and to core, um, that to, uh, put words in the clerk's mouth, but she's contacted some other counties and they're not doing it that way, but we did confirm, in fact, uh, you know, broadcast the statute that is black and white, that's how we do it, we pay our proportionate share. So assuming that's, there's no reason for it to be any different, it's the law, that's just how it is. Uh, we did consult with the attorney today too, they've drawn our attention to that particular section of the statute, so that's how we're proceeding.
I, I thought, and I guess I must have misunderstood that, at, at the last meeting, something was said about core and millage, and I, I thought there was no, no cost to them if they put a millage on.
So I did some further digging, just because I wanted to make sure of all of the details, and like Tim had said, I spent the day on the phone with a lot of people, um, and ended with our county attorney, and we did go through the statutes and he did say that, yes, we can split it.
So is Core willing to split it?
It's.
I don't read in the statute as there being an option. It says it will be divided proportionately between those who are on the ballot, it's, it's, there's really no other interpretation.
So they paid for the millage in the past, because it's a continuation, there, we've seen them.
They did, but they were the only people on when they had this the last time, so they did have to pay their, they paid the entire portion of the third ballot, so yes, they did.
Um, Core will be here at your December fourteenth meeting to present their proposal, so it'd be good opportunity to talk about that with them at that meeting. Um, we received their notice today for that meeting, so that's, that's how we were able to confirm they were going, going forward.
I, I know we talked a lot about this at the committee of the whole, um. I don't necessarily agree, I agree with the timing of this on the February ballot. Um, I, I'm going to be in favor of this, uh, because the, the sheriff's in favor of this, this is his department, um, his and the other sheriffs, again, I don't know if this is the best idea or not, I guess the voters will have that, uh, will have that say, I, um, I wish there was no cost to us on this, but unfortunately, uh, this decision's been made, so, again, I'm in support of the millage, I just am a little uneasy about the timing. So we shall see.
I did go back and I pulled some information, um, from the twenty twenty primary, presidential primary, the August and then the November. The presidential primary, there's twenty-three percent voter turnout, August is forty-two percent, and then November was sixty-four percent, so this is this is the election where there is the least amount of turnout. So.
Um, again, and we're looking right after the holidays and win our taxes and could, could work for us or it could definitely work against us. So. Anyways, any other, any other, uh, discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Item seven C, resolution to appoint a member to the jury board, this resolution is sponsored by Brett, by clerk Brett Gildner, the revised structure act of nineteen sixty-one requires Ogma County to appoint a jury board that consists of three qualified electors of the county on recommendation of the thirty-fourth circuit court judge, approval of the resolution will appoint Janice Afritz to the Ogma County Jury Board for a term ending April thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
I'll make a motion.
Motion for Commissioner Wiltse?
Yeah.
Support from Commissioner Mayhew, any further discussion? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries item seventy, resolution to authorize temporary work hour adjustments for the county clerk's office. This resolution is sponsored by clerk Brett Gildner, on September twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three, the Board of Commissioners approved resolution twenty-three dash one three-two to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget, the fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget included a position allocation list which limits the hours of county clerk's office employees to thirty-five hours each work week and seventy hours in each pay period. The workload obligation of all deputy county clerks will increase following a recent employee resignation. To meet this demand, clerk Gildner asked the Board of Couldn't, Board to consider approval of additional work hours during the candidate recruitment period at a cost of approximately twenty-two hundred dollars. Additional costs will be offset by position vacancy savings of approximately sixty-six hundred dollars. Proof of the resolution will allow all deputy county clerks to work up to forty hours per week through December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
I'll make a motion, we accept the resolution.
Motion for Commissioner Wiltse? Any support?
I want to discuss it, man.
You gotta support it first.
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Simmons, discussion.
I'm being a dictator, you could have supported it.
You supported, so go ahead, Commissioner Simmons.
Thank you so much. I'm getting dictated, I'm just being smart. The reason, the, the, the one thing I like to know is, you know, about kind of clerks who are working forty hours, you can play, you know, I look at Tracy and she does payroll and she does claims and stuff, why would she have, I don't see her job changing, why would she have to work forty hours a week?
Just to help fill in for customer service, the desks, the phones. Cause I, I. Every other aspect of our office, she does more than just pay, she does, she comes out and she does help with customers.
Do you, do you have another new employee already?
Not, no.
Oh, you, so you still look at the higher one?
Yes.
Okay.
We do have the new family court one, but she's been in place now for a couple of weeks.
Okay.
And it wouldn't be my part timer, it would just be the.
Okay.
The three full time.
Uh, and how long would this go on?
Until the end of the year or until it's filled and we can.
December thirty-first is what, can I go past?
Of this year, correct.
So four weeks.
Okay.
Which I don't think is, it's not unreasonable.
I just wanted to know about, yeah, okay, that's all I wanted to know.
Any other discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item seven E, resolution to approve a letter of understanding with steelworkers local eight-five-six-nine and to establish a unified holiday schedule. This resolution is sponsored by administrator slash controller Timothy Davahani in the calendar year twenty twenty-three, Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve fall on a Sunday, the current collective bargaining agreement with steelworker local eight-five-six-nine states recognized holidays which fall on Sunday will be observed on the following Monday. However, when Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve falls on a Sunday, Michigan Court Rule eight dot one one zero declares the proceeding Friday as the holiday. Approval of the resolution will adopt a memorandum and understanding with steelworkers local eight-five-six-nine to establish a unified, unified holiday schedule consistent with the Michigan Court Rule eight one one zero at no additional cost.
I'm like a motion.
I second.
Motion, Commissioner Wiltse, support from Christopher Mayhew, I think we all got that email from Tim. Any further discussion on this or questions? All in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed, motion carries, um, item eight, any new business? Oh, new business and claims, we got claims. Uh, I reviewed claims and I did believe Commissioner Scott did as well, like last, last week, what was the, oops, let me pull up the amount here. Claims weren't terrible, uh, hundred and seventy-six thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-four cents. Commissioner Scott, are you on the phone?
Yes, he is, I see his name.
Yeah, I think claims were pretty, uh, there was an HVAC in there.
He's not talking.
You're, you're muted, Commissioner Scott, if you're trying to talk.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yeah, you reviewed claims as well, correct?
I did, I saw alarming.
Yeah, me neither, I remember an HVAC thing going through, nothing. Cost was low.
Yeah.
Any questions, guys? We reviewed him early, I think it was last week sometime.
Let me give a motion to accept the claims.
You have a motion, is there any support?
I'll support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltse? Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltse.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Uh, any new business commissioners? Unfinished business? Item ten, administrator slash controller's report.
The primary report on the iPad, two things I wanted to just, um, make you aware of. On December fifth, I'll be attending a meeting with MERS, our MERS representative, they do, uh, regional meetings across the state, we're in region two. And I'll be attending that on December fifth, it's gonna be in bad acts and there's not a Zoom option, so I'll actually have to go to that one. The second one, uh, there's a employer advisory committee meeting from Mesa that'll be on the seventh, and that'll be after the committee, the whole meeting, that one is by Zoom, so it'll be, um, you know, a lot easier to, to fit into the schedule. I think both of these are important, and particularly in case of Mesa, they've got a lot of irons in the fire about ways they want to improve the health insurance plan, and this is a group that they start vetting some of those ideas with, so the last meeting was very productive. Uh, went for about two hours, but a lot of good ideas came out of it, in fact, I think that's where they began originally talking about that balance plus plan that we just, that were, were offered with our employees, so both of them, I think, pretty important, so, uh, be able to report back after the meetings if anything profound happens.
When is that Mesa, right?
It's on December seventh, it's a Thursday. And that's, that's it, it's a short turnaround.
Any questions?
When? Okay, we got pretty bogged down there in September and, you know, obviously come out of that now, anything more with consumers? That's what we got the ball rolling with for energy audits and stuff.
Right, and I had an opportunity to follow up on that, it did pop up on my screen today to, to remind me, but, yeah, nothing more to report on that yet.
Anything else? Item eleven, eleven, elected officials on department head reports.
Quick, no reports.
Your cash summary report for October is on your iPads, the negative cash is highlighted for you, and I just wanted to mention that our audit begins on Monday.
Wow. Seems like it just got done. Sheriff?
No report.
Well then. Wow. Anybody on the phone? Don't see anybody. Um, matters from the floor? Movements for adoption, Commissioners report, Commissioner Simmons?
I want to talk about the airport, they're gonna redo the runway and there will be grants for that, we should have the money for that, our managing stuff. And the airport will be closed for a while while they're doing this, thirty to forty-five days, depending on the weather, and they're hoping to start hopefully next year, but, um, they probably start in September, so it won't be during the busiest time at the airport when they start doing that runway, cause runway, the airport will be closed during that time. We only have one runway.
How long are they looking at?
Thirty, forty-five days, depending on the weather.
Wow.
That's a mile runway is. Runway. That's long for me anyway, I hate walking in.
Any other, anything else?
Not as well.
Commissioner Mayhew?
Nothing.
Commissioner Wiltse?
Uh, transit report, we had a meeting last week, um, you know, we talked about some of this at the, uh, committee hold meeting for the pricing. And, um, I did speak with Ray a couple of times on that, he's really concerned about, uh, some of those, um, possibilities of a flat rate. Mainly because of the high population of riders we had in that blue area on the map, which is our local, right here, feels like we pushed a lot of people away because they'd be having to pay a lot more than they're used to paying, um, but he's open for more more talks, so we'll continue those talks and he was hoping to be here tonight, but he had some commitments, so I'll ask him that he can be here next week, cause it is something that I'd like to continue to move forward with. Uh, new construction, all the materials for our pole barn cold storage have been delivered. Uh, we're just waiting on a, one item that hopefully is gonna be resolved, uh, I would hope that this week, and we can start, uh, building the cold storage barn, um, we had some pretty big potholes out there, uh, tomorrow. Uh, those will be getting filled by a local contractor and asphalt company, which is good, and our new sign is built. Hopefully will be installed by end of this week. Uh, Mills Township, I had my meeting last week, we got two parks under construction, uh, both by local contractors, uh, Skidway Park, uh, really turning out really nice, beautiful, great play area, new basketball park, marking really sharp. Uh, Smarts Park has all new, some new equipment, they're doing some work there, uh, the township's diving heavy into build, possibly building a new township hall. Um, we do have a recreational marijuana facility, um, that was, was approved and they're building that right now. Uh, they're doing some road work around there and all that's looking really nice.
Where would that go?
You know where the smoke shop is, right by the hardware store? Uh, right across from, um, D's, you know, D.
Oh, okay.
Right across, there's a smoke shop, and then the owners of that are, are the ones that got approved for the the recreational marijuana, so it's going right behind there, separate building. Uh, emergency management cert, uh, December nineteenth, we got a, uh, first aid, uh, first aid and CPR training, and then that can be also, if anybody else wants to be involved with that, you contact Michael Ballers and there'd be a charge for that.
When is that?
Uh, December nineteenth.
Wherein?
Um, I, I believe it is here, possibly could be at EMS, but, um, I can find that information out for you guys if you're interested.
That's for BLS, basic life support certification?
Oh, yes, yep. Uh, DHF had a meeting there last week, oh, they are fully staffed, which is rare for them. Very happy about that, everything's going well there, and then I have a meeting tomorrow morning with the road commission. Still waiting to hear on our regional housing partnership, I talked with Lenny, the fiduciary there at Target Alpina. And we're really excited about that, but we have not heard back from the state slash Mishta on what they're going to grant us for that. Um, but, um, coming down the line, I had an EDC meeting last night, uh, we do have, uh, we're really close to having, um, a new business that's gonna be coming in off of, um, thirty, and they could be, they're gonna have possibly up to three phases of construction on the business itself, each phase will increase how many jobs, and the first phase could bring a hundred and fifty jobs to West Branch. And we know that we have a extreme shortage of housing right now, so we really, really need, um, to hopefully catch a break here and maybe be able to track some developers that could get some incentives to, uh, you know, possibly, uh, build some apartments, single-family homes, we, we need it. Yes.
Is that, um, a factory, like an industrial thing that's going in there?
It's gonna be some, some form of industrial factory, yeah.
Do you know what it is yet?
Um, I do not know the name, no, it was where, uh, there was supposed to be a couple of years ago, it would be a pretty big housing apartments, condos, and that fell through, the developers pulled out of there, and it's gonna be on that, that site.
So that's. Alright.
Yeah.
Right there by the rock.
Correct.
Oh, they love that.
Yeah.
Anything else?
I'm.
The opioid committee, I don't think you had an opportunity to talk about that at the last meeting.
Yeah, I should, I should have brought that up. Uh, so la- last Thursday, we had another opioid settlement committee, and that was our fourth, like our fourth meeting.
Yeah.
And we continue to get, uh, some new people involved, strong people that have a lot of, uh, experience in the, in the field, whether they've been showing up to the meetings or Zoom, and right now, we're at a point where we're waiting to hear back from MSU for our, uh, our study. And Tim is gonna be the quarterback on that, when he gets that information, he's gonna send it out to almost our, our stakeholders that are gonna be the ones that are gonna actually be going then and starting these peer groups. And then they'll have the questions, and MSU is also willing to help these people to get these questions answered. And then that'll truly give us our needs assessment, and once we have that, then we should be able to maybe really start to focus on some areas that we could, you know, make this money really worth it, so. But it's moving forward, have you heard anything from, back from her yet, MSU?
Not yet, no. Uh, I have gotten some more data since then and have had some ideas on how to present that to the committee and really make it worthwhile, I'm pretty excited about diving into it.
Yeah, and we, we did, uh, just because of, we're hoping in December to have a big month of getting a lot of this information together. We're not having a meeting in December, but we're gonna keep the throttle down and hopefully be getting a lot of this information together, submitted to MSU, and then again, MSU will give us, you know, some feedback, and another, another nice thing right now with some other counties that are, have been more ahead of us, they started this before us, um, you know, we can learn some things from them as well, so that's why it's nice having MSU and then, um, we have MAC that we're very involved with as well to give us information, so.
It seems like we better stay on top of the MSU in the assessment, she's in pretty, pretty, I mean, just seems like there better be some communication going on.
Yeah, I imagine, and that's, that's a good point, um, Mr. David, I think Tim may be put on your calendar by, you know, maybe next week, maybe.
That's based whether tomorrow.
Yeah, they, she seemed a little, I don't.
Yeah, she, she is a little hesitant.
That's a, um, yeah, I didn't have anything, my meeting started again next week, I did attend the, I'll be a committee by Zoom, so, um, it's been a pretty quiet, quiet week, so. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we will not be having a meeting next week, it'll be December seventh, right?
Right, right, not next week.
So meeting next week?
No.
Yeah, you get a week off.
Wow, this is our fourth meeting this month.
Yes, that's okay.
And we'll say on one of those five, five Thursdays in a month.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And, but just, uh, our township, the, um, our new townships that we're, we're having a meeting on Tuesday. Um, at.
Yeah.
And.
Township Association you're talking about?
Association.
Oh. I'm.
I believe it's six o'clock at Horton.
West Branch Township.
What? West Branch Township, not Horton, they ate there last time.
Yeah.
It's Tuesday at six o'clock?
At night, six o'clock, so.
West Branch Township Hall, yeah.
That's a good meeting.
That's the ones out on Gray Road, right?
Um. No, that, that's Ogma Township, it's over by the, it's over by the church.
Yeah.
Berry Road, yeah.
Oh, the other side, that stone.
Um, Christie Dugan from the Bureau was supposed to be there to present.
Like a hole?
I hope so.
Oh, who's supposed to be there?
Christie Dugan from the Bureau. From the Bureau. She's amazing.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Okay, any, anything else, Commissioners? Any, any general public comment? Come on up, sir. Do you know the rules?
Yes, I do.
Okay. Go ahead.
My name's Al Endres, I work for Ogumah County Public Transit, I'm a driver. Uh, I watch your meetings all the time, too, I'm trying to get to. Get in touch with you guys, that's also the only way I find out what's going on at Transit. Uh, I heard a few comments last week. About the fare situation. Um. And I go, if it was just a mistake was made or what, but drivers do not give change. Uh, if somebody puts in, say their fare is a dollar fifty, they give me two dollars, that money goes in the box, it goes to on their, on their account. So next time I need a ride.
Oh.
There, they've got that money already set aside. Uh, again, you might not know, so I just thought.
Thank you.
We'll open it up a little bit, uh, ridership in Skidway is very good. But we don't have much of a shuttle in, in Skidway. I talked to the driver that handles that route twice a day, he said we have one person. So, and then that could be changing. Um, the last thing I got for you is that we have this transit committee. And I think it's a great thing, Ray needs the help, definitely, he's doing a great job out there, but he needs some help. But I think the transit committee is ignoring, or not ignoring. Uh, overlooking a group of people that could be a big help. And that's the employees out there, drivers and, and dispatchers. Not everybody's got ideas, but, you know, be nice to be asked. Something, cause again, the only way transit find, the transit employees find out what's going on. Is for Mr. Wiltie, and this will be, and. Mr. Simmons. At these meetings. So, it's a lack of communication, and, and Ray is busy, I know, but we don't, sometimes we don't see that much. But he's doing a good job on that, not gonna, but it's just that we're not finding out what's going on with the committee, and. That's our livelihood, folks.
Absolutely, appreciate that.
Thank you.
So, when a judge, so I understand, is when an individual gets on, I apologize, I've never rode the transit.
Okay.
When no, an individual gets on, their, their information's in a system, and how much money they get, they provide.
They are, uh, dispatcher, when they call in, will give them the amount of the fare.
Okay.
And when they call the, the driver, they give that information to the driver. Then it's up to the driver to collect. Now, sometimes we get vouchers from the hospitals. And also mobile valings such, but.
So the driver has to put in how much money that individual gave to them?
Yes, it's, we have on our log sheet.
Okay. It's, is it computer or handwritten?
Handwritten, we're not, we're not, we're still back in the day.
Wow.
And where the computer goes down, they don't, they don't have to worry, because they don't have one.